Welcome to the January 26, 2022 Henry County Commissioners Meeting. Would you rise for the pledge of the flag and a brief prayer?
Heavenly Father, we ask that this meeting be conducted according to your will and that we act in accordance with your guidance, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Make your motion, accept the minutes as...
I will second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review the claims?
Make your motion that we accept the claims.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review the payroll?
Motion to accept the payroll.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Corey.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update. At your station, I gave you two documents. One is our, kind of hot off the presses, Investors Newsletter. So this is the document that we use to update our contributors. And so, as you know, we're a public-private organization with investment from county government, city government, and then we raise funds from the private sector. And so we use this in that request to investors. And so it is a look back and a little bit of a look forward. I don't think there's anything new in here, but 2021, in spite of the continuing challenges provided by the pandemic, there was a lot of activity all across the county. You know, so the spec building, we broke ground on that, and many of you were there on St. Patrick's Day of last year. It is substantially complete now, and the County Redevelopment Commission will be purchasing that from the developer in a matter of weeks. The road out there in the industrial park is done. We got a few minor punch list items. So, and all of that is generating good activity on the business attraction standpoint. We had a site visit today out at the Shell Building. The only reason why they came to talk to us is because we had that building. They also, if that building didn't work, they're also looking at some ground in the industrial park. So that is the advantage of the Shell Building Program. It continually is confirmed, both with the former Shell Building, which is now the board's head hummus plant, and then the current Shell Building. So the activity is strong, but if you go to the middle page, the Tom's Corporation, you know, out on 109, tremendous employer for our county. He provided a guest, Ward Wildman, provided, was a guest speaker at a recent EDC meeting. And based on what he shared there publicly, I mean, they could be up to 100 people by the end of this year. So, and that's a new niche for us. You know, we've long been really good at manufacturing, this medical device manufacturing. And so that's really good for our county, particularly that end of the county. BCW Supplies happened to be in Middletown today, parking lot, there's a lot of cars in that parking lot. And so they took the old Leebhart Mills Building, as you're going out 236 towards Anderson, and then obviously the TS Tech expansion. So, I mean, if you add all that up, and I should have done this before I, at the podium, but you're looking at over 200 new jobs with those three projects right there. And then, thanks to your leadership and the county council's leadership, we were able to distribute $268,750 to grants, grants to small businesses all across the county. And that was the Okra Grant that was matched by county government. So we simply served as the distribution agent. If you all weren't willing to go for the grant and supply the matched money, it wouldn't have happened. So appreciate your support there. And then Penny continues to work the EPA grant, and you all supported a reapplication. So thank you for that. Moving to the other document, which is about ready. Our region was awarded 15 million, which, there will be a lot of good that comes from that. That is one page, what you have there is one page of like a 15-page PowerPoint, which is available online if you want the other 14 pages. You can go to indiana ready dot com, right-hand side, it'll say additional materials and downloads. You click on it, go all the way to the bottom, and there's that PowerPoint. Allegedly, they are going to update that with each PowerPoint webinar. And so we're attending weekly, participating in those training sessions. If you want to drop in and listen and read and see what's going on, you're welcome to do so. We're, I'm doing a lot of talking here about ready. I suppose I should just land or crash the plane and say, I don't know. I don't know. And as soon as I do, you guys will be amongst the first. We know we got the money. Don't exactly know, I mean, nobody's talking about specific projects that I'm aware of. We're waiting on additional information, additional guidance from the state on how this is going to work. It is the same source as ARP money. So, so there was a recent letter to the editor about how the ready program and the writer said that I should have acknowledged it was federal funding. Well, at the time, we didn't know it was federal funding. We didn't realize it was federal funding until basically it was awarded. Well, I'm here now to publicly acknowledge that the source of the ready program is federal ARP money. Very similar to the process that you all are going through. The guidelines, though, continue to seem to either change or be reinterpreted. So, happy to answer questions. We're still going through the learning process. There will be an opportunity for elected official input, decision-making, because, as I've shared, ready only wants to be 20% of a project. So our partners at the state may really like a project and want and encourage our region to fund a project, but I just want to say, keep in mind, they're only 20% of a project. So the other 80% is going to come from a variety of sources, some of which are, potentially could be local public. And so there'll be continued dialogue.
So I'm assuming since it's from the same funds as ARP, you guys have to follow this? The ready program has to follow, the ready funds have to follow the same guidelines as the ARP funding as well? Or is there going to be a little differences between that, how that has to be used?
I think, at the 30,000-foot view, Commissioner, I think yes. There may be some nuances, because it's coming through the state. The state has hired Ernst &amp; Young to help advise them and indirectly advise the regions on how to be in compliance with this funding. And so Ernst &amp; Young, in combination with the IEDC, are the ones leading the weekly webinars. They call them weekly classes. So I'm in ready university. So yes, I think so. Not looking for any decision tonight, I just want to plant a seed with you. That poster back there, what if it was the new tourism logo? And the tourism website? You don't have to respond, it could be the worst idea. I just want to plant a seed, we can talk about it some other time. Or if you want to keep that, maybe we do something over here. I'll close with this, unless you have tourism questions. The college football championship, and I'm not a college football fan, so don't ask me, but it was hosted in Indianapolis. Georgia and Alabama played in Indianapolis. CBS 46 out of Atlanta did a live news shot at 6:00 PM hour from the Hoosier Gym. You can't buy that kind of coverage. So that brand, even if you don't like basketball, that brand is powerful. You know, the classic line from the movie Hoosiers, as Normandale, the coach, played by Gene Hackman, is walking in and says, welcome to Indiana basketball. Thank you.
Hey, Kerry, since you asked me to be on the agenda last month, and I forgot, and I said I'd put you on this month, and I forgot I'm going to have you come on in. I forgot, but I didn't forget.
Well, yeah, I may have responded in my head. We'll blame each other. Thank you for letting us come. I'm Kerry Barrett with Newcastle Main Street and the Bicentennial Henry County 200 Committee.
I'm Scott Frost with Henry County 200 and some other things, but this is what we want to talk about. We want to kind of update you on our progress with Henry County 200 and some of the newer things that, we handed out something to you that was one of the newer projects that just has come about in the last few weeks. And that's the idea of a torch run that's going to run through every township in Henry County. It'll start in, at Tri High School, and head south, and then east, and then back north, but it's going to hit every township and most of the major cities. And we've been talking with the trustees to try to get them coordinated with it, if they have any interest in having ceremonies, or lunches, or breakfasts when it passes by. But Nate Lamar's worked hard on this, and it's one of our newer projects that's come up. We really appreciate all our volunteers who have just, who have stepped up and just taken an idea and run with it and did most all the work for it.
Literally, run with it.
Run with it.
And we would love volunteers for this torch run. You have to run a nine-minute mile, so. Or you can drive, I suppose. You have to run, and we have to, oh, go ahead.
I can drive a nine-minute mile.
You can drive a nine-minute mile. We have to have it so quick, because we, it will end at the courthouse with the, help me, the...
Time capsule.
The time capsule. So the ceremony will be that evening after the torch run. It will end up here.
Yep, the time capsule is buried right in front of the courthouse here, and that'll be at the beginning of the month. That'll be one of our kickoff ceremonies, is digging up this torch run and digging up the time capsule. And it happens to fall on the same Saturday as the cruise in, so there'll be a lot of people, a lot of attention downtown to the kickoff. And then the time capsule will be, a new one will be reburied at the end of the month. So those are sort of our bookends to the month. There's a golf tournament, there's a reach out, which Mary Beth Taylor's done, to all the education, all the high schools, all the schools in the area to help promote the history of Henry County to them. Our big event is, you want to talk about it?
Sure, the Guinness World Record of Knockout at the Fieldhouse. So we need 702 people to compete for a knockout tournament. We hope to have more than that. And luckily, if COVID is still around, the Fieldhouse holds 10,000, is that true? Yes, I'm not...
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. But, so that will be Saturday, January 25th. It will begin, registration will begin at 11:00, and the event will begin at 1:00. And at the same time, we're very excited, we're going to have a hoopla festival. So hoops, hoopla, and that, we hope, will carry on every year forever and ever, so that we have a hoopla festival in Henry County somewhere. But we've already started to celebrate with the Magical History Tour that is right now taking place, well, not right now, but it's taking place at the library, began in January, January 12th. And there was a How Did We Get Here presentation by the Henry County Historical Society. February, Ricky Kotman is going to talk about Black History in Henry County. We, League of Women Voters is going to be in March, because that's Women's Month, and then so on. We have several events at the library and around town, or around the county. So we just wanted to give you guys a few, an update, things that we were doing. It's exciting, it's already started, and we had one other question to ask.
We have, I think we have two questions to ask.
We have two questions to ask.
One is about, and I think we discussed this briefly with you before, the idea of going through the school system and having kids through school help design a county flag. Is there any objection to that going on, or is there any thought that that could be adopted if it was, if, or would you guys like to be a part of the group that judges that?
My only thought is, what if we don't like the flag?
Any of them?
If students are, I mean, if it's going to be a county flag, it represents Henry County, and there are some talented students who maybe could do a very good flag, and everyone would like it. But there are, in the field of art or designing, there are a wide variety of tastes.
Yes, that's true. And we plan to have the schools kind of...
I would, I don't think I would promote it as, certainly you could have a contest to design a county flag, but I wouldn't tell the winner that the county is definitely going to adopt their flag.
That's the point we were going to make, yeah. And just, just the thought of you guys...
The county might like it and adopt it, but it might not.
Would you be more likely to adopt it if you guys were involved in the choosing of the winner?
Or does that make it worse?
We don't want to put them, we wouldn't throw, you know, 50 of them in front of you, but it would be narrowed down at that point.
Perhaps it would be better to have a bicentennial flag?
Yeah, perhaps it would be. Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, I think it would be easier, because I would hate for somebody's feelings to get hurt, because art is so subjective.
Yes. Well, and if it's wonderful, and we love it, we can adopt it in 2023.
Yep.
Okay. And then what's our other question?
Our question is, the woods. We gave you that one handout that shows a area where they're, we are possibly planting 200 trees, very small starter trees, basically. But Healthy Communities came to us through Jeff Ray with the idea of finding a spot in Henry County to create kind of a bicentennial garden or woods that starts out that wouldn't amount to much for a while, but, you know, 10 years they'll look at it, or 20 years and realize when that started and why there's 200 trees there. And apparently that is land that is county land, just south of Memorial Park.
Yeah, by the soccer, yes, by the soccer fields in that low spot.
It's not in the middle of the soccer fields, it's on the south end of the soccer fields.
Yes, yes. And we don't... Yeah. We have some, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't take place until probably April, around Earth Day, and we would also work in tandem with the schools and the library, to the environmental clubs, to plant, they would have some trees to plant as well, so it would just coincide. So we have a little time.
Why was this location...
I'm sorry.
Why was this location selected?
I think it was big enough.
It was big enough, it was visible, it was something that people could go, if we put signage up there, people might, you know, in years to come, be able to walk through that area.
I just think that, rather than, I think certainly in the park, we could find a place to plant 200 trees, but I sort of would like to get the park board involved and have them, I mean, I'm sure there's places to plant 200 trees, but one square in the middle of that area, which looks like here, I'm not sure that would be the best place for it.
Well, you have to put...
I mean, they do use that field, even though it's only, I've seen activities go on in that area where that square is, and that whole field fills up when they have the fireworks.
Well, would the next best step be to go, to go to the park board?
I think that would be good to include them.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're not trying to...
Everybody likes the idea of planting trees. I'm just wondering if that's the best place to plant them. I would like the park board to weigh in on it anyway.
Okay.
Well, you have, you have to ideally, even if they're small, when they start, you ideally have to come like 15 feet apart to anticipate, you know, the growth over the years. So it does take a little chunk of land to put that many together, but we will check with them.
We can go to the, yeah, that's fine. That's all we had, unless you, I think that's all we had, right?
Yeah.
Unless you guys had any questions, or...
So are they still trying to get the kids or people who will run in the...
Yes.
Okay, have, just as a suggestion, and I'm guessing Nate has done already, gone to the schools about, to the cross-country, and I'm sure he's already done all that.
That's, that's...
No reason for me to even bring it up.
He wrote his own press release, it's been, he's been a wonderful volunteer.
He has been, he has.
Yeah, that's our first outreach to the schools, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a whole host of bonds tonight. I'm just going to read them all. Hi, Victoria, come on down.
Thank you, sorry, I was running a little bit behind.
That's all right.
As you may know, Okra has extended your owner-occupied rehab program and granted an additional $250,000 to the existing program. So we are looking at assisting possibly 15 to 17 additional homeowners. You've got a waiting list of about 40 from the first half that we assisted, so we've already worked on contacting five to 10 of those to get inspections scheduled and updating their files. So we're, we're moving along. Okra has given us through the end of October to assist these additional homes, so we'll probably be moving pretty quickly. As a part of that, since they extended your grant, I have for you an addendum to our contract, which basically it's all of the same fees that the first round was, as far as per-home dollar amounts. Our environmental review fee is obviously a lot less due to the fact that we did a lot of the front-end work before the first half of the program. So if you have any questions for me, hopefully you've seen this ahead of time.
Joel, I believe you've reviewed this as well.
It's fine.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept this agreement with the ARA.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
I do, thank you. Okay, perfect.
Now we have a whole bunch of bonds. We have a bond for the Sheriff's Department for $10. We have a bond for Cheryl Wright, treasurer for Henry County 4H, for, $100,000. We have a bond for $5,000 for Scott Pinkerton. One for Jody Brown in the amount of $15,000. One for Deborah Barnes for $30,000, and I think that's it.
There's one for Ramona...
Did I miss that one?
Garza, second.
Oh, sorry, Ramona Garza, sorry, for $5,000. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion, accept the bonds.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Passage three zero. Okay, we have appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. We have John Madison and Paul Jansen, who, I guess we can take these one at a time, if you want. Apparently Paul and, sorry, my, John, both currently sit on the board, and they're asking to be reappointed. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So Paul Jansen and John Madison are reappointed to the board, and then we have two more. Bill Aginson, I never can remember how to pronounce his name. Aginson is stepping down, and Mike Broyles and David Gratner have both applied for the position. I will read both of theirs. This is from Mike Broyles. "I'm ready to express my interest in the recent opening on the Henry County RDC Board after Mr. Aginson's retirement from the Board. My interest with the RDC began with my appointment to the EDC Board and became stronger when I was voted in as Board Chair many years ago. I understand what the RDC does for our county and how..." I understand what the R D C does for our county and how it has grown the county's manufacturing and retail over the last twenty years, and I would like to help this continue for the future. I am a lifelong resident of Henry County, as is my wife of forty-five years, Patty. We have two daughters, one daughter and family living in Michigan, and the other daughter and son-in-law and grandchildren living in Newcastle. I'm a retired business owner, Magnum Machine and Tool, board member and past chair of the Henry County Community Foundation, present member of the E D C board, and member of the newly formed Newcastle Land Bank. Along with my cousin Scott Frost, I have purchased five vacant downtown buildings over the last seven years to rehab and lease to help our downtown revitalization. My heart is in Henry County and I want to see it continue to grow. Sincerely, Mike Broyles." Dear Commissioner Plummer, this email is written to express an interest in the open, this was sent to everybody, I just printed it off. This email is written to express an interest in the open position on the redevelopment commission. As a businessperson, this is an area of great interest for me. Below is some information as to my qualifications. I'm, in nineteen seventy-six, I graduated from I U with an anthropology major. After graduating, I worked in retail for several years. In addition, my wife and I had a recovery audit business that included Marsh supermarkets and other grocery wholesale companies. In nineteen ninety-three, I began overseeing the family Newcastle K F C store and increased sales consistently to maintain the second highest sales in the state of Indiana. I served as the Central Indiana Advertising Co-op President for six years overseeing sixty-two stores. After selling the K F C store in twenty thousand fourteen, I began a career in real estate, buying and selling homes in Indianapolis and locally, and I'm a member of the Central Indiana Real Estate Association. A few years ago, I read the economic development book by Eric Canada and the E D, that the E D C had in their library. I attended seminars and consistently continue furthering my education. Having returned to Henry County in nineteen ninety-two, I've been lucky to know so many wonderful people in the community. Economic development is a strong goal for the county. Working on the redevelopment commission will be an exciting opportunity to learn and help achieve that for the county if I am chosen." Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, put David Gratner on the board.
Do I have a second?
Hold a second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three zero. We have one person that applied for the, uh, open position on the, uh, Henry County Memorial Park Board. Uh, September Clark, this is to whom it may concern, I'm writing you today for an interest in becoming a member of the park board. I've been a registered voter in the community for several years now and have been a resident of Henry County for the past eighteen years. I would like to be considered for a spot on the park board and feel like it'd be of service to the community.
Make a motion, we appoint September Clark, park board.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And we have an appointment for the Middletown Fall Creek Township Library. Between, uh, dear commissioner member, commission members, between the holidays, multiple staff members out with COVID in preparations for the ARPA grant, I missed the expiration of your appointee's term to the Middletown Fall Creek Township Public Library Board of Trustees. She is Debbie Harry and her last four term ended December thirty-first. I request that you reappoint Debbie for another four-year term on the library board. She's an enthusiastic library supporter and her work experience with H and R Block and as local businesswoman has proved excellent background for treasure position. Debbie is definitely an asset and one we hope to keep. Thank you for considering this appointment. Debbie's term would encompass the years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. Encloses a form for you to sign and return to us. Sincerely, our thank you, Teresa Dennis, Library Director.
Make a motion that we appoint, uh, Debbie Harry to the library board.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Reports we have from Stony. The food and beverage appointment, she declined. Sorry, I forgot to put that down there. She declined, yes. Sure. Yeah, it was gonna take a lot more time than what she had anticipated. So, we still have an appointment, a board position open. Corey, how important is it that you have that position? I mean, how many, how many more weeks do you think you'll be meeting, or?
So I'll look to the attorney to correct, right? But I, I, i- if, if y'all are comfortable not appointing someone, I think we'll be fine. We're almost to the point in the process, it'd be pretty difficult.
I did speak to a person today. They wanted a couple days to think it over. Unfortunately, I told them, you know, we're doing appointments tonight. But if this person does call me back and they, they are aware, I briefed them of the time commitment and what you're working on. And if they get back to me in the next few days, I suppose we could have a special meeting and appoint them. If not, I'm not going to seek another person for that.
Want to be supportive of, of
Legally, you're, you're
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an advisory body to the county council, so, I mean, I don't think anything would make it defective if you didn't fill it at the same time you can, I mean.
Okey dokey. Thank you, Corey.
If the person says yes, i- i- if I could have their contact information and all, I'll, uh, get them up to speed. Thank you.
Okay, reports we have, the Stony Town, Stony Creek Township Fixed Asset Capitalization Policy. We have the report from Ways and Measures. The clerk of the Circuit Court. Intech, which I didn't get written down on here. And we have an I D M wastewater treatment plant construction report. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next, we have one quote, which is from Serv Pro for mold remediation in the basement of the Masonic Building. And that is for one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. This, this is due to the water issue that was found to be down in the basement. I believe we've got the water issue resolved. Is that correct? For the time being, anyway. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, make a separate quote.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Joe. Wait, sorry, Angela, you're first. You have nothing? Okay. Now, Joe.
Good evening. I have three things this evening. Uh, first is, uh, it's that time again for community crossing matching grant funding application. I put an application together, uh, asking for a full million dollars. And, uh, I need a financial commitment letter, uh, signed by President of the Commissioners and President of the County Council. So I'm here this evening to ask for approval to get the signature to put on the letter.
This will come out of the low hut, this
Low hut.
Come out of low hut?
Yes.
Low hut, excuse me. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Do you need that signed tonight, or? Do you need that signed tonight and given back to you, or?
Just so it's ready for tomorrow. I have to submit it on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. Second item is, uh, pipe pile for bridges. I need some additional piling. Uh, I asked for three quotes. I got two quotes. The third did not respond. I have, uh, Nucor, Skyline Steel, and Triad Metals. The Nucor is, price is thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. And the price from Triad is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. So the low quote is from Nucor Skyline, and I would recommend to accept their quote.
Any questions about these quotes? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Your motion to accept Nucor?
Yep, accept Nucor's bid.
I will second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three
Third item is, uh, I'd gotten a call here la- I believe it was last week, from Bobby, about a complaint at the intersection of State Road Three and Three Hundred South, about the problem with no left turn for westbound traffic. People are crossing that double yellow to make that left turn on oncoming traffic. Uh, that's dangerous. There's room there. There's thirty-six feet of pavement across there. So there's enough room for three lanes. So I contacted Luis, uh, with NDOT, he's a district traffic engineer, and, um, he come back, I asked him about it. He come back and said if we put together a sketch, he thinks it may be possible because of the width of the pavement that's already there. Uh, so he asked for a sketch to be submitted, so I put together a sketch for a full left, left turn lane at that intersection. The right lane will be a through and right turn. But they said, uh, Luis said that his maintenance, he's got maintenance people or contractor or somebody that can come in, and if they approve it, I'd have to do all the pavement marking changes, but he could put in the, the new loops for the signal. So we, we get moving. I, I didn't have a lot of data to go by. I don't have traffic counts, I don't have, uh, phase timings for, for the signal. So I, I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, this, I put in a hundred and forty-foot left turn lane, which will handle seven vehicles. Okay? But there's semis, so, so you gotta take into account the semis, so you'll be able to handle a semi and a few cars behind it or in front of it, whatever the case may be. So, um, but we'll have to go in and, uh, take up the old markings and put down the new markings, but, um, that intersection, that loss of the left turn is a real hazard. I have large drawings if you want, if you want them.
So we just need to coordinate this with them to change the light patterns, the loops on the lights. We'll just have to coordinate with them timing-wise.
Yeah, it, no, no, we, we, we don't touch the lights.
Yeah, they'll, they'll come out and do that, we'll let them know.
Yeah, they'll, his, his response to me was that, that he would take care of it if we, if it, if it's all right with him. I, I don't see a problem. Because everything lines up perfectly across with the Walmart exit and entrance, so. What I'm asking for this evening is approval to forward this to Luis and get some sort of a decision from the state, if that's all right.
Do I have a motion?
Aye, make a motion that we allow Joe to proceed with this.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
That's all I have. Any questions?
The, the one thing that we're waiting on, right? You sent the documentation, sorry, I'm losing my words. The right-of-way or the easements of the road, of Van Nuys Road?
I've talked with Joel, and we, we, he, he knows what, what's going on and what I submitted, and yeah, he's all up to date, so. That's no problem. All right. All right, thank you.
See, Steve's not here. Tom, do you have anything? Okay, Rick? Debbie? Rita?
I don't know if this is allowed or not, but I'd like to say that we have an opening for the Park Secretary, if anybody knows any, anyone, to, uh, call the Park Office. Since ours was stolen from us. Thank you.
Hmm, I don't know who stole her.
That hap- that kinda happened pretty quick. I was, uh, thinking that perhaps when they find one, that the old one can assist for a while.
Assist who?
Assist the new Park Secretary, but she's gonna walk into an office, there's no superintendent in there, and the secretary's gone. I would think she may need some help to get started.
Yeah, but that's the, that, she works for the Auditor's Office, so that's not our Okay, so now we're down to the ARP ordinance. This is Resolution twenty twenty-two, one, twenty-six, zero, zero, one. A resolution amending Henry County's written plan for the expenditure of the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one was enacted on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Whereas ARP, among other things, established a Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which provides for the disbursement of revenue from the United States Treasury to local governmental units to assist local government, mental units in rem- remedying the negative fiscal impact stemming from the COVID-nineteen public emergency, health, health emergency, excuse me. And whereas the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund is established under forty-two U S C eight oh three, provides for the distribution of revenue to counties throughout the United States, and whereas revenue received from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund may only be utilized for the specific purposes set forth in forty-two U S C eight oh three. And whereas on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County adopted Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, dash seventeen, dash zero one three, in which it established a written plan for expenditures of sums received through the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and allocated the sum of one million dollars to contribute to the cost of improving the sanitary sewer line that will serve the new Henry County Jail Rehabilitation Center. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to amend the written plan for expenditure to provide for additional uses of revenue received through the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana as follows. Henry County hereby adopts the written plan for expenditure of revenue received from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund as set forth on attached Exhibit A. The remaining sums received by Henry County through the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund may be utilized for any of the purposes set forth in forty-two U S C eight oh three. The written plan for expenditure will be amended from time to time as determined by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County in advance of any other expenditures. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict hereby, are hereby repealed. Any provisions herein contained, which is found by a court of competent jurisdiction to be unlawful, or which by operation of law shall be deemed unenforceable, shall be amended, but the rest and remainder of this resolution, to the extent feasible, shall remain in full force and effect. In Exhibit A, the sums received by Henry County, Indiana from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund shall be utilized for the fiscal recovery fund shall be utilized for the following purposes. $1 million to contribute to the cost of a new sanitary sewer line that will service the Henry County Jail. $600,000 for premium pay to certain employees of Henry County, Indiana, as described in the ordinance attached. $10,000 as a hiring bonus for new employees accepting employment as jail officers at the Henry County Jail and Rehabilitation Center after such facility is opened. $50,000 to retain an employee whose job duties will consist of selecting and writing grant applications on behalf of Henry County, in part to obtain additional funds for the purpose of addressing the negative effects of COVID-19. $400,000 to obtain one or more ambulances for the use by Henry County Emergency Medical Services, and $8,700 to obtain an assessment of the physical condition of certain buildings owned by Henry County for the purpose of determining any necessary modifications or repair to the buildings, including repairs or modifications necessary to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. Do I have a motion?
Bobby, I would recommend, before you pass it, number two should probably read, rather than instead described in the ordinance attached here two, to read, described in an ordinance to be adopted by the Henry County Council, given that that ordinance hasn't yet been introduced. And doesn't exist, so therefore we can't attach something that doesn't yet exist, so.
So I will go back and reread. $600,000 for premium pay to certain employees of Henry County, Indiana, as described in the ordinance to be adopted by the Henry County Council.
Yep.
Now, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2022-01-26001.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Indiana Landmarks is not coming today, is that correct? That takes us to Commissioner's schedule, which at the last meeting, we changed the first meeting of the month to 10 o'clock in the morning, and realized that sometimes the drainage board meetings last longer than from 9:00 to 10:00 on that Wednesday. So we need to adjust it. So we discussed maybe adjusting it to 11:00. Are you okay with 11:00?
11:00, good.
11:00, good. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we change the time to 11:00.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next, we have a change in the Veterans Museum contract lease between the Park Board, the Commissioners, and the Veterans Museum Park Board and Commissioners. So this assignment and assumptions actually removes Henry County Memorial Park Board from the lease, which they have approved and signed Monday. So I will read this. "The assignment and assumptions of obligations under lease is entered into by and between the Board of Commissioners of Henry County and the Board of Trustees of Memorial Park. Board of Commissioners and trustees are the landlord under certain lease entered into with the Veterans Museum of Henry County Memorial Park dated April 20, 2020, under which the tenant leased the basement of the W.G. Smith Auditorium located in 2221 North Memorial Drive, Newcastle, Indiana, 47362. Trustees wish to assign the duties and obligation as landlord under the lease to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners wish to assume the duties of trustees as the sole landlord under the lease, subject to the terms and conditions of this assignment and assumption of obligations under lease. Now therefore be it agreed, trustees hereby assigned to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners hereby assume all obligations as landlord under the lease. Notwithstanding this assignment, the costs and expenses for utilities supplied to the premises shall continue as currently paid and from the budget allocated to Henry County Memorial Park. This assignment and assumption of lease shall become effective upon approval and execution by the Board of Commissioners and Trustees, all of which agreed as set forth as of the date set forth above." Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the changes to the, I guess it's the lease that we have with the Veterans Museum.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Rita, you need this copy tonight. Nope.
Do you have a copy that's all signed?
Yeah.
Oh, you have. Make sure it's signed, make sure that's all signed.
The last item was what Joe and I were talking about, that Joel has to review. I think that's everything. Does anybody have anything? Nope, nope. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.